Hi, everybody. Welcome to the February 27th meeting of the Board of School Commissioners. Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Moved by Commissioner Cannon. Do I have a second? Moved by, seconded by Commissioner Chinia. All in favor? Meeting is open. Commissioner Chinia?
I'd like to take the time this evening to recognize the passing of a City Schools employee. This individual was committed to supporting our students through their work. She will be remembered fondly by the greater City School community. And tonight, we send our deepest condolences to her family, friends, and colleagues. It is with great regret that we inform you of the passing of Arthur Spence, who served in the capacity of a custodial worker one for almost 35 years here in City Schools. During the course of her 35 years of service, she served as a custodial worker in the north and northwest clusters, as well as at Lakeland Elementary Middle School, Hilton Elementary, and Pimlico Middle Schools. Ms. Spence diligently served on the staff at Pimlico Elementary Middle from July of 2010 until November of 2017, at which time she was reassigned to her most recent assignment at Hamden Elementary Middle School. She unfortunately departed on February 12th, 2018, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and the entire City Schools community. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to have a motion to approve the closed session meeting summary from the prior meeting. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, second. Seconded by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Motion passes eight to zero. Are we all nine here now? Nine to zero. Yeah, nine to zero. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the last open session. Motion? Moved by Commissioner Richardson, second. Seconded by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Motion passes 10 to zero, including our student commissioner. With that, I believe since the last public meeting, we've had, all of our committees have met, and Michelle, who represents us on the Maryland Association of Boards of Education legislative team, also will have a report. So I'd like to start, Commissioner Frank, with a brief report from the Operations Committee.
The Operations Chair, Michelle Bondima, asked me to lead the committee meeting last week. We talked about four items. We received a budget item, a budget update for the fiscal year 2019 budget. We talked about transportation, feasibility study for Hartford Heights Sharp-Ledden Hall Elementary School colocation, and finally procurement. On the budget, John Land gave what was billed as a budget update, but it was more an overview of the fiscal '19 process for school principal and community engagement. We often hear that principals are not experts at budgeting. This year, the principals were given budget guidance for more than 11 specialty areas, covering more than 20 topics ranging from comor to tech purchasing. There was a lot of intensive counseling and mentorship given to principals on the budgeting process. On transportation, there was a lot of activity. We were reminded that the cost of curb-to-curb service is at about $43 million, which reaches about 6,700 children or students. This year, we have 20 fewer buses primarily because of driver shortages. And Commissioner James Hassan actually saw that as an opportunity to think about ways that we can prepare kids in our, in our school system as potentially having a career in the transportation industry. If we see opportunities that could serve the district, why not prepare our kids for careers that might serve the district? There was a House Bill 674 that created a working group to bring in outside experts to look at ways for transportation to be more efficient and save costs. The task force or work group consisted mostly of government and nonprofit. We recommended adding some private sector. And finally, there is an interesting and exciting procurement for Digiton Corp. This will provide funding, if approved today, for a public-facing new website with more online resources and information for staff. It will be accessibility, it will meet all accessibility standards. And I think it will be a good companion to the new blueprint and the other initiatives that the CEO and other staff are bringing to the school district.
Thanks, Commissioner Frank. I'd like to turn to Commissioner Hassan for the Policy Committee report.
So the Policy Committee met from 3:30 to 5:30 in this room on February 20th. We originally on the agenda had the social media policy and our board calendar, or the policy calendar. We had a brief presentation on the social media policy, more in looking at approaches we're going to be taking in a long-term, very careful, conscientious approach to creating a well-balanced, well-rounded social media policy. I would like to remind people that there is public comment available during the public, the policy meetings. And I personally would love to get some student input on the social media policy and have this be an opportunity for students to join us to present. Also, on February 20th, we had a very successful police policy forum listening session here. I'd like to thank the people who came out to that and the board members who were part of listening. We've certainly got some, some good information from all perspectives in the community. And then lastly, our next meeting is March 20th, where we will hear the first review of the school police policy. Again, public sign-up for that happens the two days in advance by calling or emailing the board office. Thank you.
Thank you. The Teaching and Learning Committee met this morning in this room at 9 o'clock. And we, as with the other committees, had a very full agenda. This morning, we, we looked at the beginning of the approval process for the mathematics and fine arts curriculum. I want to just let everyone know that there is an important date coming in March. You'll hear more, I know, from our curriculum office, but on March the 14th, 2018, from 5 to 7, there will be a forum where parents and community can come and see some of the components of the math, the new math and fine arts curriculum, actually do some hands-on activities. And this will be held at the Baltimore Design School. There'll be more information coming before the board actually votes on these new curriculum areas. We also discussed and had an update on the pipeline work around the recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers for our system, as well as growing and retaining and securing good school leaders. We will continue to do that work. Some of the exciting information today was the fact that we are looking at our own program around aspiring leaders again. We got a very deep dive on the kindergarten readiness assessment. If you were at the last public meeting of the board, you, you got an overview of that. We looked at a little more information today around that data. It's still very encouraging that we discovered that students who participate in the Baltimore City Schools pre-kindergarten programs really fare much better than other students on this kindergarten readiness assessment. And so we are, we are happy to see that continuing. We also had an update on, our second quarter update on the special education services for students. I think what highlighted for me this presentation was just the comments from board members that this was probably one of the most comprehensive reviews that we've had in terms of really looking at the kind of instructional programming, overall instructional programming for our students that have special needs and may need additional kinds of accommodations and as, as their, for their learning. We did have some procurement items which will come up this evening also for the board to look at. I do want to announce, though, a special pilot that the Teaching and Learning Committee is going to be implementing for the spring. We have watched what has happened in operations and think that that's a great idea. And because the topics that come with our, our committee around the curriculum itself and what happens in classrooms, we're going to pilot two afternoon sessions for our committee. So on May the 1st and on June the 5th at 3:30, we will have our committee meetings in this room. We're hoping that this will be an opportunity for more members of the community who may want to come out to be a part of that discussion. We're going to also include public comment during this, these two sessions. On May the 1st, we'll be talking about the operator renewal process. We'll be looking at career and technology education. And we'll have another special education update. And then in June, we'll be looking at the results of the middle and high school choice, looking at the area of student wholeness and the update around that area in our blueprint. After these two sessions, we're gonna, we will review how things look and then make some decisions about our agendas and our scheduling for next year. So again, we encourage you, if you would like to, to come in person. We know 9 o'clock is not always convenient for everyone, but if you want to mark May 1st and June 5th, 3:30, we encourage you to come and join us here. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Chinia. I'd now like to ask Commissioner Bondima, who is the board's representative on, for the MAAB Legislative Committee that works with representatives from all other districts in the state. She was part of an interesting discussion at last week's meeting, and she wanted to give us some perspective on, on what happens at those legislative sessions.
Thank you. Yesterday, which was February 26th, the Boyd, MAAB Boyd met. And at the board meeting every, every month, we have a discussion about bills and activities going on around the districts from all of the, just, board members, board representatives from the different areas in the state of Maryland. And each of us had the opportunity to give a brief update of what's going on in our district. And one of the things that I gave, one of the topics I talked about was how we had our police policy meeting in here last week. It was last week, yes. And, yes, and one of the things that we had a discussion about, well, we had a discussion and it was very interesting. I brought up the topic of, about how our meeting went. And our community had the opportunity to have a discussion about policies or anything of interest, they had their voice heard. And it opened up the floor up to different things that's going on around the state of Maryland. It was quite interesting. And they talked about school safety and what was going on in each of the schools. And they, they showed a, quite a bit of emotion on what was going on at their school and about the safety of their children. And I was quite taken aback at all the things that's going on in the schools. And just to give you a brief idea, one of the districts talked about the fact that their schools had no locks on the doors, which was questionable because if something should occur on the campus of the school and they tell you to lock your door and, and go through the motions and go through the safety training that you've, you've incurred at the school, they had no locks on the door. They talked about budgets and they talked about guns at the school, which was quite interesting, and different opinions about teachers with guns. And so the conversation will be continuing, and we would like to bring it to your attention as it occurs. And you'll be hearing more about it through the, in the future, right away, because this is a topic that everybody's talking about. But I wanted to let you know that this was a 30-minute conversation where we usually only have one, 10, 15 minutes, not even that long. So that's my notes.
And it's also important to remind everybody that we are in these conversations with other people from the state, too. I just have a few comments from my perspective. I just really want to thank everybody for their ongoing engagement. I, I think we learned from other districts, especially when we're in conversation with other people from other boards, how much public participation Baltimore gets and how much we appreciate that. So I've been in Annapolis a lot this session. I know somebody commented a couple meetings ago that we're not in Annapolis enough, asking for things or defending ourselves. Well, that's not true. Because I feel like I've, I've got my own little lane devoted, you know, the high, high occupancy vehicle lane. It's just me, but I'm always going. But every time I go, no matter what I'm there for, there's other people from Baltimore, whether it's students, parents, advocates, and it's, it's just terrific. At the Fox 45 Town Hall, which was actually dedicated to talking about the positive things going on in City Schools, while Dr. Santalisis was the speaker, there were other people from Baltimore there. Special shout-out to Kim Trueheart and the Teachers Democracy Project for the great job they did on the Parent Education Engagement Forum. You know, just another opportunity to get people together, find out what's on people's minds, get ideas, and pass, and share information. The board, you know, Dr. Santalisis kicked off last night, some monthly sessions, what they're calling voice sessions. So, you know, she can be in conversation with people from all over the district just to, you know, talk to people. We had it suggested to the board, I think in one of the early January meetings, you know, could there be more opportunities to talk to the board? So we are, we are going to do that. We're kind of sort of fussing around with format and timing and number, but we're working on some ideas now to just have, in addition to all the regular forums around budget and portfolio review, policy issues, those are never going to stop. We're always going to create forums for people to come together on whether it's a hot topic, like whether there's heat in schools or a policy issue like police policy. We would also like to set up in companion to what Dr. Santalisis is doing, just board listening sessions. And a subset of us will show up at a school and we'll just talk. We, we hope to be able to share the, kind of the details of that, if not in March, certainly in early April. So our, our attitude is more, not less. The more we can engage, the more we can talk, the more we can hear from people, the better off we'll all be. So we, we're grateful for people's interest and their desire to engage because it only makes us all, it only makes us all better. Certainly, certainly helps our kids. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to approve the PEP Agenda. Motion by Commissioner Cannon, second. Seconded by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Commissioner Hassan, Bondima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes 9-0. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Santalisis.
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. Good evening, everyone. And I would like to invite Chief Jeremy Grant Skinner for tonight's PEP Agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. We have two appointments this evening, and both individuals are here with us. So first, Lori Bush, currently teacher vocational at Carver Vocational Technical High, is appointed coordinator for PTEC in the Office of Learning to Work effective February 28th. And second, Stanley Wolf, currently Educational Specialist II for College and Career Readiness, is appointed interim director of career readiness in the Office of Learning to Work effective February 28th through August 31st.
Great. Thank you, Chief Skinner. And starting in March, City Schools will host a reception on the day of each public board meeting to recognize and celebrate both continuing and retiring employees who have achieved milestones in their years of service to City Schools. I'm on a regular basis, it seems like every week, I'm encountering people who tell me they have been here for decades in service to City Schools. That's a good thing, by the way. And so what we will do is we will select one or two individuals as representatives of the broader group for additional recognition here during the board meeting. But again, we want to invite as many people as, as whom fall into the qualifications to those receptions. And tonight, we would like to recognize two individuals who recently retired from City Schools after serving our schools for more than 30 years. And I'm going to ask Chief Grant Skinner to read the recognition of these two individuals.
Wow, these two individuals are not here with us tonight. They will be a part of our first reception in March. So Mr. Spencer Davis started his employment with City Schools in June 1987 on the facilities team as a building maintenance worker one in Northwest Cluster One. He was later promoted to serve as a building maintenance worker in Maintenance and Operations. Mr. Davis served our students in schools for 30 years and seven months. Second, Dr. Everett Garnett started his employment with City Schools in 1973 as a principal at West Baltimore Middle School. Dr. Garnett served as an area executive officer for middle schools, coordinator for people services, and coordinator for student records. He then served in several director roles, most recently Director of Suspension Services. We thank Dr. Garnett for serving in City Schools for 44 years and five months.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. As we proceed with the evening, as everyone knows, or will know, literacy is one of the priorities that we highlight in our district's blueprint for success. We know that the ability to communicate effectively, not only in speech but also in writing, really is critical to our students' future success. And so with that in mind, I am pleased to announce an important opportunity for students, teachers, and administrators to learn how to start a writing center at their school. And this session is to be held at Baltimore City College on Friday, March 16th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. The session will cover how to start a writing center, how to recruit and train tutors, and how to collaborate with staff. Sessions will be led by current tutors, so it's a great opportunity to get some real-world knowledge about starting and operating a writing center. I want to say that last year, I had the opportunity to visit the writing center at City College. And I will just say that it really was encouraging to see such buzz of activity amongst not only teachers who had really showed a lot of leadership in this effort, but also students who were serving as tutors to their colleagues and really started out as an effort within that community, but truly has grown to be an essential part of that institution. And as a result, I think, has really helped spur a lot of the improvement that City College has experienced in the number of young people who've been successful in the culminating essay of the IB program. So without further ado, we want to give you a small glimpse into what you'll experience if, in fact, you attend this session.
In a writing center, we consider ourselves to be a family.
We coach. We help guide you to your own conclusion.
Not a lot of people are tutors, so you are that special person and you get to help multiple people.
You're getting help from someone who is your peer at your level and that you're working together and collaboratively. So the dynamic is completely different.
We've helped impact a lot of students with understanding the context and breaking down things so they're more successful in writing.
Put it into a tight essay. We did our introduction and I helped him with his thesis statements.
Check on my essay and stuff. And having someone that's somewhat close to the same age as me so he can relate to what I'm talking about.
Really break things down for things that I didn't understand.
Like, help me complete it.
And I'll check up on them, like, are you using this? Are you using that? And I'll also invite them back to the writing center if they seek additional help.
If you can come to a space where you feel supported and you feel like you're going to be validated, you know, you want to come back and you also feel like you can move forward with your work.
Writing is everywhere and reading is everywhere. It's a skill that you'll carry throughout your entire lifetime. And it's a skill that you'll always have with you and it'll never run dry.
Work towards opening more spaces similar to this. It's about access. It's about equity. It's about bridging the academic gap and ensuring that our students and all the students in Baltimore City Public Schools have the opportunity to achieve at the highest levels.
Wonderful. So again, I just want to encourage everyone to go out. This is something that really could occur at, at many more City Schools. And I just want to thank the City College team, the young people there for opening that up and sharing their practice. So thank you, and again, want to encourage everyone to participate. At this time, I'm also very pleased to recognize a significant achievement by one of our students, Owen Pereira. Owen, did I say your name correctly? Very good. Who is an eighth grader at Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School. In its inaugural season on the Universal Kids Network, Owen won the title of Top Chef Junior along with a $50,000 cash prize. Let's welcome Owen and the Founder-Director of Baltimore Montessori, Allison Schechter, to hear more about Owen's achievement and Baltimore Montessori. So Owen, if you would like to come forward to the table and just talk to the board and the public about... Yes, I'm sorry. Turn it to green. There you go. And just tell us a little bit about, about what happened.
So my name's Owen Pereira. I'm an eighth grader at Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School, and I've been there since first grade. So I got into cooking when I was around, I think, around three. And then I kind of started really getting into it and wanting to learn more about it when I was around 11. And, you know, one of the things that really helped me a lot was the Student Kitchen we have at our school. And I think it's really great that we have one because not a lot of kids get the skill to cook. You know, it's an essential skill to life. And I think it's great that they get to kind of get a take-off in learning how to cook at such a young age. But yeah, Top Chef Junior, it was amazing to film. I got to meet a, I went out there this summer to film it. It aired about four months ago, I want to say. But I got to meet a lot of amazing people. You know, the hosts and the judges, they were all really nice. And, you know, it was just an amazing all-around experience.
Well, congratulations. I don't know if any members of the board have any questions for Owen.
Tell us a little bit about what you made.
So...
What were your, what were your top dishes at the end?
So my top dishes, have you, if you've watched Top Chef, you would probably be familiar with Restaurant Wars. But the Restaurant Wars dishes I made were really, those are some of my favorites. I worked with another kid on that. And the appetizer we made was a relot of duck breast wrapped in Swiss charred with a plum compote. And then the entrees we made, the entrees we made, I did a dry-aged beef with kind of like mushrooms and truffle, kind of that, and fondant parsnips. And Henry did a rabbit loin wrapped in prosciutto.
Okay, that's crazy. Next time, we're going to do one of these. They're bringing. My question's similar, but three years old. Is, is that your mom?
Yes.
Yeah. So what did you, you were interested in cooking at three years old?
Uh, yeah.
Like, how did that happen? And what did you, what was you, what were you allowed to do in your? My mother wouldn't let me near the stove when I, that's a great. What were you doing at three?
My mom was always cooking when I was really little. So I was kind of in the kitchen, watching her and kind of just learning through watching. And I remember the first thing I learned how to make was scrambled eggs. So I, I learned how to make that at a really young age.
Good for you. And it's very cool. And kudos to you. Kudos to you. Commissioner Bondima?
I, you know, I'm so proud of you. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I worked my way through college doing fine dining. You know what that is? And that's French serve, okay? And if people from Baltimore remember the Peabody Hotel and Peabody Conservatory on the top floor where Reagan's, Ronald Reagan's chef was there. Shows you how long ago it was. But anyway, and the beauty of learning to cook and to cook the way you're doing and learning the whole process, you will never be unemployed. Never, ever. And it will take you through years of school and of college and whatever. And you can just do it as a hobby. And when you retire, you can just do it for fun. So what you just, what are you doing is just wonderful. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now, and now I was going to invite, oh, I will next invite, Principal Allison Schechter, sorry, founder, Allison Schechter, to just present a little bit about Baltimore Montessori Public Charter.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to honor Owen. We're just really inspired by not just his work in the kitchen, but also how he's explored this passion outside of school. And it's interesting talking with him, trying to figure out how does he continue to explore this? Because at his age, there's not a lot of opportunities to let kids use knives. So, until you're 16. So, you know, if anybody has any ideas to help him support that passion, that would be great. And we have a really unique and ambitious program at our school, our Student Kitchen that Owen referenced. We call it our Seed to Table Program. And it's a place where kids can learn where food actually comes from and be involved in that whole process. And... Yep, coming from our garden or from local farms. So we have a big emphasis on sustainability, learning where food comes from, harvesting it, cooking it, preparing it, eating it. And it's amazing what the kids will eat when they've been involved in that whole process. And also just seeing the, the leadership skills and the confidence and the responsibility that they demonstrate in the Student Kitchen and then how that transfers over into the classroom. So it's been just a special part of our school that we really love. And I'm glad that we were able to support Owen with that but that he continued and took it well beyond and hope that he continues with that. So thank you so much.
It's great, Allison, because I think clearly he was nurtured, Owen was nurtured at a young age by his mom. And so to be able to be in a school that can nurture that passion as well, it's just phenomenal. So kudos to the school as well.
Thank you.
And great. And great. And what we do have, I believe that you brought with you, was a video on Baltimore City.
Yes, we did. It's our 10-year anniversary this year, and as part of that, we did a special dinner this fall, where Owen worked with the chef at Gertrude's, and so you'll see that featured in this film. So just to give some context to what that was about.
Great. So everybody enjoy the video.
It has been an incredible journey at Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School, reflecting on our progress and envisioning our future. We were able to transform two vacant buildings and an empty lot into a vibrant learning community. Visitors are struck by the peaceful and enriching environment we created and the classroom buzz as students engage in hands-on, personalized learning experiences. We offer a variety of extracurricular activities, such as step, chess, sports, and the amazing Seed to Table, a kid-powered cooking and gardening program focused on healthy living and sustainability. Thanks to generous funders, we offer a free pre-K program starting at age three. We assist our graduating eighth graders with admission to a high school of their choice to set them on a path for future success. Your continued support by attending one of our upcoming events or considering a donation to our school community will enable us to further our mission and expand our reach. Your generosity will make it possible for more students to access this extraordinary education and develop the tools they need to become creative problem solvers and mindful citizens of the world.
Well, I just want to thank both Principal and Founder Allison Schechter for joining us at Baltimore Montessori School, and Owen. While I do not have another $50,000 for you, we do have a Certificate of Achievement that we would like to honor you with, so that you know that we here, the CEO, the board, and all of city schools, is incredibly proud of your accomplishment. So congratulate.
Thank you so much.
will not wonder now, because we are honoring this evening another student achiever, Bryce Taylor, who is a sophomore at Bard High School Early College. And he has already accumulated an impressive... Excuse me, an impressive list of accomplishments as a student chef and a school reporter. And for those folks who have not visited Bard Early College High School, it is very characteristic of young people there to be both scholars within the classroom and outside. Bryce is an original member of our student media team, where he has participated in countless stories and TV shows, including our first Facebook Live and the popular School Meals Unwrapped segment, no surprise. And speaking of meals, Bryce has also been recognized for his skills as a chef on Chopped Junior, and most recently on Stove Tot on the FYI Network, as well as local appearances on WBAL-TV. Let's watch a video of Bryce Taylor in action, and then as we welcome him, up to speak about his accomplishments as well.
The media team with a brand-new original series, Girls in the STEM World. That seems really cool. Let me pick one more. What about this one right here?
Think it is a success, yes.
Around a marketplace for their best culinary creations. School lunch is something we talk about. There are meals we love and ones we don't like as much, or at all. I'm going to take a look at what happens in our cafeteria. And students are getting orders done, they are cooking, everything's hot in here, it smells amazing.
High five for trying your vegetables.
Hello, and welcome to Great Kids Up Close, our first episode of 2018.
Very nice. And so...
Ah, now you're talking.
So Bryce, tell us a little bit about... We'll get to taste. So goes my no-sugar-out-of-the-window, by the way. But please, share with us a little bit about, again, how you got started, what you liked most about cooking, and frankly, what we're getting ready to sample.
Press this button. There you go. First, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners today for inviting me here. This is a really huge honor. My name is Bryce Taylor. I attend Bard High School Early College. I started cooking when I was about five with my mother, and from that moment, I just shot, and I just started, like, I cooked every single day. Oh, really? Okay, fine, I can do this. I was confused. So since I was five, I just... I was cooking in the kitchen with my mom, and I just had a blast, and I realized that this is my passion, this is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and it's fun. So one of my first dishes that I ever made, and I kind of failed on, was grilled cheese. And honestly, it wasn't even grilled anymore, it was just burnt. And I was like, I was like, Mom, you still want to eat this? And being the mother that she is, she still ate it. So, thanks, Mom. So after that, my mom, she signed me up for Chop Junior, which is a great experience in itself, that was one of the best experiences of my life. I got to meet three great, like, other kids, they were amazing chefs, and also got to meet, like, a bunch of celebrities who were the guest... Guest hosts, and also got to meet the host Ted Allen. But when it comes to the Student Media Team, that is one of the, like, most amazing organizations that I've ever heard about and I've ever been a part of in my life. I signed up for the Student Media Team when I was in, I believe, seventh grade, maybe eighth grade. Eighth graders weren't even supposed to be on the team, and it was supposed to be high schooling up, and I signed up, and I got to say, Jim took a really, really big chance on me, and I got to thank him for that. And I've been with the Student Media Team ever since. And the great thing about the Media Team is it allows us to showcase all those amazing properties of all the amazing schools that are in the district. And I got to say, it's one of the best things that I've ever been a part of. So thanks to Jim for that.
So questions for Dwayne? Bryce, Dwayne. I'm sorry. Commissioner McFadden?
I just want to congratulate you on this incredible work that you're doing here in city schools. And I feel like, you know, you're a media person. I feel like these are the types of things that we want our media, our public media, our national media, our city media, to pick up on, the amazing things that our young people are doing, how they're persevering, how they're moving through life, and they're not succumbing to challenges, right? But you're moving beyond them, and you're doing an incredible job. I mean, and then I think you have more fun on the camera than you actually probably do in the kitchen. Either way, you've got a beautiful life in front of you. Either way, it's just incredible. So kudos to you. Are your parents here?
Thank you so much. This is my mother right here in the corner, filming everything.
Kudos and congratulations to you for the work that... The dedication and the time that you're putting in with your amazing son, because if it's... I mean, it's the parents that really make the difference in the lives of our young people. So thank you for sticking with this young man. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much, sir.
Hold on now. Now, what's in... What are we eating?
All righty, okay. So today, I prepared for you mini quiches. Now, the thing about this mini quiche is I... What's in it? It's broccoli, salmon, and manchego cheese. Manchego cheese is goat cheese, it's really, really nice, rich and buttery. And for the crust, it is a flaky biscuit. So please enjoy.
Well, while Commissioner McFadden is eating, is there... Does other people have questions, comments? So I do. So you're like a TV star, and also a chef at Bard Early College.
Thank you so much.
I don't know how you'd have time to go to school, frankly, but I'm curious, what are you thinking about how to use these kind of combination of talents and interests as you think about your future? Not that you have to already know your future, you're young, but it is an interesting set of talents that you already have.
So I... My aspiration, honestly, what I want to do in the future, I want to become a personality, I want everyone to... I want to be a household name, a household chef name, like all the other favorite chefs, all the other famous chefs out there. And honestly, when it comes to the Student Media Team, it has helped me with my on-camera presence, with my speaking, remembering scripts, and presenting myself in front of a camera. And that's a great... A great ability and a great skill that I've tried to build up over the years that'll help me in my future career. And when it comes to Bard, Bard is one of those schools that it's one of a kind. And at Bard, they're teaching, and they specialize in liberal arts, so they help me with my writing. I... So far, I got to say, when I went to Bard, I was, I think I was a pretty okay writer, and now I think, I think, pretty good. You know, I think, I think I've gotten a little bit better. But, um, and it kind of helps me, it just helps with my writing, it helps me with vocabulary, like, we do vocabulary drills every day. I learn new words almost every single day. Sometimes the writing is a little extensive, I go home and my hands kind of hurt, but we don't have to tell them that. So, and that's what I really want to do. I just want to, once I get out of school, I really want to go to college, maybe go into hospitality and hotel management. And I really just want to become a household name in every single house in the nation, and even the world.
So before, Mr. Frank, I want to add on question. So you started with grilled cheese for your mom, which she did do the mom thing and eat the burnt grilled cheese.
Yes.
But do you cook for your mom still?
I cook every single night, and I cook because I like cooking.
No, that's great. So what's your favorite thing to make for your mom?
Honestly, I... One thing I hear my mom, she always talks about is my cashew-crusted salmon. Honestly, anything salmon that I make, my mom eats. Honestly, anything that I make, my mom eats it. But I cook every single night, I post on any of my social media pages, and, yeah, I think it's the... Am I right? Is it this? Oh, smoothie bowls, too. I make some every morning, I wake up and I make my mom's smoothies. I just started making smoothie bowls, and I'm pretty sure she likes them, right? Okay.
Commissioner Frank?
I'm done. I'm wondering if there are seconds, possibly?
Yes. Yes, we do have more.
It was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just congratulations. Very good. And I just want to thank both Bryce and Owen, again, for making us proud. And Bryce, I want to invite you up as well. Again, we're not stove tots, stot tots, but we want you to know that we here in city schools are proud of you and what you represent, which is the best of city schools. So we want to present you with the Certificate of Achievement.
Thank you so much.
All of our young people, and all of their talents, they're in different areas, but they really do exemplify in so many ways, student wholeness, and students as whole people who have different aspects of their personalities, some that just aren't always obvious when they're walking down the street. So we don't know when you're passing in the hallways the next top chef in Baltimore City Public Schools. And again, we're proud of both of them. Also, I want to take this time because we have had a challenging week or two within the country with regard to school state safety, student safety, our colleagues in, and frankly, our extended family in Broward County in Florida, and the loss that we are all still recuperating from. I think one of the glistening gleams of hope for me, as a school leader but an educator at heart, is very similar to what we just experienced with Owen and Bryce. Out of that challenging trial, frankly, and tragedy, we are seeing young people activate their voice and actually take on the role of self-advocacy that we want for all young people to be able to have. And I think at this time also, I want to take the opportunity to let our public know that we are committed as a school system to keeping our young people safe. We have used this opportunity to revisit a number of our policies and procedures with regards to student safety. I also want to make clear, because I know that there's been some confusion within the public, that Baltimore City School Police, like other members of law enforcement, have a duty to intervene and protect in an emergency. The current law governing our police force provides that a school police officer whose permanent or temporary assignment is at a school or on school property may carry a firearm on the premises of the school to which the officer is assigned before or after regular school hours, on school days, and on days other than school days. We do not believe that the law impedes, or was intended to impede, the ability of our officers to appropriately respond to emergencies where the very life and safety of students and staff is in peril. As such, our general orders will be updated, and many of you know that we are in the process of updating our general orders with regards to correct policy. Our orders will be updated to address how officers are to respond to active shooters, including the manner in which those assigned to schools may retrieve their weapons and firearms. The draft general order will soon be posted on the website, and members of the community are encouraged to submit comments to policyreview@bcps.k12.md.us. The board has already held one forum and is currently scheduled to review all general orders at the March 20th Policy Committee meeting. I also want to acknowledge, and continue to acknowledge, that I believe that the greatest success that we have had with regards to school safety over the past two years in particular is really due to, first, the leadership of Chief Akil Ham, and the commitment of school police to really focus deeply in on building productive relationships with young people. These are officers who, again, have been commended by, at the state level, for their commitment and their deep training now in adolescent development, in de-escalation, in mediation, in cultural responsiveness. And we continue to see the fruits of their commitment to build relationships with young people and have a place within the school community that, again, while in any threat to life, they will absolutely do what they need to do. But the foundation of what we have seen over the last two years, that we have frankly had no excessive force complaints in the last two years since school police have engaged in this kind of deep training and commitment development. And we have almost double diversions to teen court and community conferencing even from this time last year. So last year, for the 2000 year-to-date, 2016-2017 school year, we had 66 arrests at this time, and 132... 152, excuse me, diversions. But this year, year-to-date, in the 2017-2018 school year, we have reduced that number But this year, year to date, in the 2017, 2018 school year, we have reduced that number almost in half to 38 arrests at the same time this year, and the diversions have increased to 309 diversion. So I think as we look at both the data, when we hear the feedback from our young people, it does not mean that things are perfect, but what it does mean is that our strategy of making sure that school climates are places where young people feel safe, where they feel that they are working in partnership and relationship with school police, that they are part of the community. By actually focusing on relationship building, we are seeing increased safety and an increased feeling of safety and relationship amongst the school community and school police. It is now my privilege to recognize another courageous act of bravery by a group of school police officers. On January 23rd, a student at City College was the victim of an assault and carjacking. School police had initiated a robbery initiative in the area, which led to the apprehension of two suspects and the recovery of a loaded handgun after a vehicle stop and foot pursuit. This was a team effort by our school police involving a number of officers who reacted quickly and without regard for their own personal safety. We are, I am very pleased to invite all of the officers involved to come forward and be recognized for their bravery and professionalism in protecting our students and staff. Officer Tracy Moore, Officer Lawrence Smith, and I also wanna notice, note that Officer Smith is also the head varsity football coach at Dunbar, and they won the state championship this year.[711.11][711.11](applause) Corporal Nathan Warren, Sergeant James Johnson, and Officer Daryl Tompkins. She's saying where you're coming from?
Yes, my.
Would you like somebody else to take a picture?
Yes, please.
(inaudible) our young people in our schools. And this concludes my recognitions and comments for this evening.
Thank you, and on behalf of the board, we also really appreciate everything that our school police do for our young people and our staff, it's amazing. With that, I'd like to walk through the consent agenda items, and board members can indicate any item they want pulled and the reasons for that, so that staff has time to get answers to those questions, and then we'll come back later on for a vote. Let's start with item 8.01, Policy JRA, Maintenance and Release of Student Records. That'll go by consent. Policy, excuse me, item 8.02, Feasibility Study, Hartford Heights, Sharp-Ledden Hall Elementary School. Any desire to pull that? That'll go by consent. Item 8.03, Union Contract Extension, Local 44. Item 8.04, Union Contract Extension, Pizzaza. Item 8.05, Union Contract Extension, PSRP. Item 8.06, Union Contract Extension, FOP. Item 8.07, Union Contract Extension, Cub. Item 8.08, FYQ, FY18, Second Quarter Budget Amendment Request. Item 9.0, now procurement items. Item 9.01, Digicon Corporation. Item 10.01, Inspired Instruction. For the public's information, item 10.02, IEP and Therapeutic Aids, has been deferred to a future meeting. Item 10.03, Donna L. Banning Consultant. Commissioner Hassan?
I'd like to pull that, simply because in the Operations Committee earlier this week, we had a transportation update, and this is a different transportation approach, and I just wanna hear how it fits in to what we heard at Operations, if it's in concert.
I also had a question on that item. It talks about the $60,000 being an amendment to an existing contract, but I couldn't tell from anything in the write-up what the existing contract is. And similar to Commissioner Hassan, I couldn't tell what problem we're trying to solve. Is this a special ed problem? Is this a Transportation Department problem? It was just very confusing what this was actually trying to do. So I think when, when the staff comes forward to discuss it, maybe could give a summary of the actual, what it is and what it's trying to do, but also please reference the, what's referenced as an existing contract, because it really wasn't clear. So we will pull, we definitely wanna pull that item. Item 10.04, Baltimore Teachers Union. And, and that's it. So when we vote later, we'll vote everything by consent except for item 10.03. I was, oh, there, I'm sorry, I was looking, I missed it. Item 13.01, On-Call Construction Management. So, everything except item 10.03, we'll vote, we'll go by consent when we get to that part of the meeting. I'd like to invite, to start our comments, I'd like to invite our guest and friend John Casey from the BTU.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Lady Cassiani, Commissioners, Dr. Santalise, and of course to my good friend Allison, who's always available and receptive to our concerns and issues. I'm gonna piggyback off of what has been mentioned earlier tonight about the shooting in Florida, and give you the teachers' union perspective on what the White House has said and how we feel about the guns. There have been many debates locally, nationally, and most recently from White House about arming teachers as a means of protection if someone with a gun entered a school. We can't emphasize enough that the BTU does not support arming the teachers in the buildings. Our educators work tirelessly to create environments that are conducive for learning and should not have to worry about all the ramifications surrounding teachers being responsible for carrying firearms. Baltimore City Schools does have protocols in place to address what should be done if a shooter enters a school building. We believe that the number of practice drills be increased to train educators, administrators, staff, and students on what procedures they should adhere to if such an incident would happen in a school. So we would encourage that, what they have in place, just to do, like they do fire drills, something very similar, so the kids know what to do and what action should be taken in the event that something unfortunate happens in a school. That's all I have for our, the concern about the tragedy that happened in Florida. On a personal note, I wanted to compliment Keith Scroggins, who's office is always available when we get calls from our teachers and PSRPs that the school was cold, or something is leaking, or something. We have our secretary email Mr. Scroggins' office, and we always hear back within a half hour of, we'll get to it, we're looking into it, we'll give you an update on it. So I wanted to compliment in front of his board members that his office does respond to our concerns and always gives an update on what is happening in the school, because we hear it sometimes before they do, when teachers or parents will say that it's cold, something's wrong at the school, the sidewalk isn't, is slippery or something, and his office does respond. So, on a personal note, I wanted to thank him for always being there and responding to our concerns.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Dr. Santalise, I just wanted to say a few words about your first set of comments.
Sure, and I just wanna thank you, John, and the BTU for your, excuse me, for your statement and stance. We, well, I can't speak for the board, I think I probably do, but we support that position. You should know, as the public should know, that we are working with the Chief of Schools and Chief Ham to make sure that every school has not only kind of a code red, an active shooter drill, but that we're maintaining that. Any teachers who have questions, if their school has not had an active shooter drill, they should contact Chief, excuse me, it's the, Kish. They should contact Chief Davis's office, and then we will follow through on that end. We definitely are taking under advisement the recommendation to increase the number of drills, and I would also announce, so you actually helped me out a bit, I would also announce that we are going to be instituting, for lack of a better term, unannounced red code drills at schools, where a team from school police will go to schools unannounced and run drills as a way of deepening our preparedness as we move forward. So I wanna thank you, thank BTU, for your partnership and your advocacy in this area, to just let you know we've heard you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, John. With that, I'd like to turn to general public comment and welcome our first guest, Rebecca Yenowin from the Teachers Democracy Project.
The Teachers Democracy Project, we began exploring some data that we thought was important to uplift around the decline of black teachers in Baltimore City Schools. This is part of a national trend, but the decline has been significant in Baltimore enough to make a topic of conversation and to come up with some strategies to reverse the trend. In Baltimore, starting from the period from 2003 to 2015, black teachers decreased 24.5 percentage points from 63% to 38%. During the same time period, white teachers increased nearly 14%. In comparison to nine other large urban areas, Baltimore has one of the steepest declines. The reasons for this are complicated, and we know, one of the things we know is that black teachers tend to work in high minority and high poverty schools, and the conditions in these schools are much more difficult than in other spaces, and it's harder to retain teachers in difficult spaces. That said, we know we need to be proactive about reversing the trend.
Good evening, I'm Edwin Green Jr., I'm a fellow with TDP. So there are some things that the TDP recommends that we should do in order to reverse the decline. More details are in our written testimony, but here's a brief summary. So in the area of recruitment, we recommend that limitations on alternative certification contracts, including limits to total number of contracts and requirements for hiring Baltimore residents and teachers of color. We also recommend that the district prioritize recruitment at HBCUs, also prioritize and offer early contracts at hiring fairs focused on black and brown candidates. In the area of certification, we recommend that the district work with the state to eliminate And in reference to support for teachers, we recommend placement of full-time mentors in schools that have the highest teacher turnover rates and the most difficult teaching conditions, and work with the teachers' union again on targeted and strategic reach-outs to teachers who are vulnerable to leaving the district, determining what is causing them to want to leave, and troubleshoot possible individualized solutions.
And we made a video on this topic, which goes a little bit deeper into some of the reasons, which we recommend folks watch if you want to dig deeper. And we also have summarized the data on the research that we've done also on our website, and we've provided links to both of those in the written testimony if you want to explore further. And we're happy to work with the district on any of those strategies, as always.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of questions, I wanna start with Commissioner Chinia.
I think we're gonna say the same thing. And this is, we are on the same wavelength, but I just wanted to thank you for this information, and in fact, a part of the discussion that we had this morning in the Teaching and Learning Committee around our pipeline for teachers addressed this very area, and we did hear about some strategies that we are undertaking as a system. I would suggest, however, that you probably also wanna get with our human capital, I'm certain that they'll be happy to talk with you and have some of your input, but very much aware of what is happening with the decline in African-American teachers in our system. So thank you.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yeah, and just part of the presentation, if you haven't already seen it, was a breakdown of how many teachers, which pipeline, traditional, and what content areas, and so there's just really rich data there that I think you'd appreciate, and I just encourage you to go through it if you haven't already.
Commissioner Hassan?
I just wanna say thank you for the privilege of including me in the project, and in further discussions with my two other colleagues at Morgan that were included, we're really interested in working with you and partnering forward to figure out how we can get more Morgan grads into the city. So, thank you.
And I just wanna ask as a point of clarification, I know that I received, I know Martha, as the Policy Committee Chair, and a couple, in the board office, received the, your written testimony. Where is that posted, so all board members can see that?
It should be in the document.
I wanna make sure that's available, it's because that document includes a link to the video, which is excellent, and when you watch the video, I mean, the written comments, I'm really, this is about saying thank you to you, the written comments were teased out nicely from the video, and then there's another link to the, to the information, the backup research, and I think the fact that you guys have done such a great job and very succinctly presented the recommendations, at the same time that the Teaching and Learning Committee is talking about it, which means they're engaged with the staff, I think this is a part of a trend that we wanna get to, where when we're working on things and we're examining policy, let's do it in collaboration with, not just wait till we've got some final things set and then chat about it in public session. I just think this is terrific, and I would encourage people to go onto the Teacher Democracy Project website and take a look at that video, it's extremely well done, really. YouTube, on YouTube, great.
And I would just say that Chief Grant Skinner will be reaching out, you should know that we've also had discussions within our recruitment, you know, our internal recruitment meetings, but I do know, just from my national work, that what you're saying is true, and actually led a qualitative project where we actually interviewed close to 200 African-American teachers across the country to get at some of the issues you're talking about. So I think this is a great opportunity for partnership, given your deep dive in Baltimore City. So, the Human Capital Team and Chief Skinner, Grant Skinner will be reaching out, because it's a great opportunity, I agree with what the Commissioners have said, it's a great opportunity to partner, and it's a great time to do it. So, thank you for your work.
It's kind of a shame that Kish is not here tonight, because she's been, geez, been on this.
She'll be here. I have a feeling these two will.
Is she out there someplace? Yes, if somebody could please talk to her.
I think a lot of people are in Annapolis today.
That's, that's what I started by saying, this is good, we're everywhere, but I think it'd be important, if somebody could pass this along, because she's been very good about keeping this in front of the board, and so just kudos to her as well. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Our next guest and friend is Seku Casemo.
Our next guest and friend is Seku Casemo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam CEO, Commissioners. I have a handout for you. A picture of the 17 victims, minus one. I challenge each and every one of you to take this to the front of your refrigerator so you never forget. There are some very valuable lessons to learn from this experience. I've often heard folk make fun of our school police officers saying they're not real police, or they're not resource officers. Well, in Florida, they had not one, not two, not three, but four resource officers, deputy sheriff, and they failed because they obviously did not get active shooter training. That means you find the shooter and you neutralize the threat. And if that means shooting the shooter, that's exactly what you do. That's what you swore to do. I get nervous when I hear somebody talk about our police officers having to retrieve their gun. From where? What does that mean? Folk who talk about wait in place for the SWAT team? How long does it take for the SWAT team to get mobilized and get to the scene of the incident? That's nonsense. And I'm not going to stop until our police officers are allowed to carry their weapons, their guns, on their person everywhere they go, in or outside the school building, before and after school, and at school events. Be advised, based on this incident, if the worst should come to pass, this board, City Council can claim ignorance. It would be negligence. We should learn from this. Give our school police officers their guns. And in closing, let me say this. Our officers are better trained than most police officers across the country. I've been researching it. As far as arming teachers, that should be optional. Some teachers have never held a gun. Some grew up with them, are very comfortable with them. Since they're in the buildings, in the classrooms, they need to make that decision for themselves. I was at Matthew Henson Elementary School when there was a shooting two blocks away, and they locked the school down. Their solution was lock the school doors, lock the classroom doors. That's no protection. Regular school doors, classroom doors are just regular doors with windows. I've heard one person mention, in reference to that situation down there in Florida, that we need to be seriously considering ballistic steel doors with ballistic glass windows that will stop bullets. And if you're not pursuing that, you're really not pursuing safety on behalf of our children. Because again, you're talking about receiving, retrieving guns? Retrieving guns from where? And how long is that going to take? And how much damage is going to be done by the time they retrieve the gun and get back to where they need to be to defend our children? That's madness.
Thank you, Seku.
Don't forget. Take it to your refrigerator so you won't forget, because memories fade and will dim.
We ran out. Next guest is William Rogers.
Hello, all. My name is William Rogers Owens. I was formerly the Student Representative at ACE Academy, and I'd like to talk to you about school and family and community engagement. This goes off of the ATP model from National Network of Partnership Schools. But first, I'd like to thank all of you for allowing public comment. Ranking Members, Chairman Kazenczy, I believe. I hope I didn't say your name wrong. I hope so. I don't want to say your name wrong. CEO, which we've seen each other lately. I hope, I hope this is not coincidental. I hope I'm not stalking you down or anything. I just want to say that.
I will just say I don't feel stalked.
Yes, I hope not, because we just, it's just like, it's just coincidental. I'll just say that. So school and family community engagement, I feel is very important. And I feel that it's very important that we use partnerships like from Johns Hopkins University to get really parents and communities and teams together to formulate and research on improvement goals. I'm reading off of something, something that the ATP model gave me while I was in training about school and family community engagement over the summer. I practiced how to inform others really about what community schools are, what communities should they have in place, and how to build action teams for partnerships. And really building together that family link means bringing together them and assemblies. It includes knocking on doors, it includes reading activities and things like that. It includes programs. I mean, it includes all stakeholders in this partnership, because we can't really do anything with just one person coming out to parent-teacher night. That's not really acceptable. And my mother, when she came to our parent-teacher night at our school, she was like, she was saying, where is everybody? Where's all the parents at? They should be here. They're involved in the student's education, but they're not here. And I really tried to connect our school with the National Network Partnership School model, but they kind of drew back a little bit because they busy and they had, they were busy and they had other things to do. But I am open to questions about the ATP model, how we can do better in our family and community engagement, not in only my school, but other schools, because other schools, they do a proficient job that they could do, probably maybe a little bit better in that communication.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thanks for the research that you're doing to help strengthen our family and community engagement.
You're welcome.
Our next guest is Melissa Shober.
Good evening. On tonight's agenda, item 8.06 is a union contract extension with the FOP for city school police officers. I know that the policies are still in development, and thank you for a much better opportunity than has previously existed to comment and review those policies before they have been finalized. That's definitely a welcome change from how things were. However, one thing I haven't heard this body comment about in any way, shape, or form is the role that the consent decree that the city is under plays in those negotiations around labor. Baltimore City School Police were included in the Department of Justice's 2016 report on two pages, 154 and 155. And specific provisions in the MOU with regard to auxiliary policing were mentioned. And certainly, none of the policies that I've seen come out from the Board Forum, and no discussion has taken place about the way in which our MOU and the roles and responsibilities of city school police will conform to what has been stated in the consent decree. I did attend a civilian oversight task force meeting and asked them to consider school police as part of that. And I wrote a letter, and I'm awaiting a reply from the Consent Decree Monitor, because again, the specific and problematic nature of the MOU, specifically with regard to lack of roles and responsibilities between the BPD and school police, the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights with regard to limited transparency protections. For example, I, as a parent, cannot know under Maryland Public Information Law whether a school police officer has sustained complaints of any kind. Those records are shielded from me, and indeed, from all parents. And those are things that were pointed out by both the NAACP's Legal Defense Fund and the Department of Justice as problematic and remain unsolved and unaddressed in the policies considered before the Board Forum, and indeed, in any forum to date. So again, as the work goes forward and before we entertain Second Reader in May, I certainly hope that this body and the very nice lawyers, who I'm sure advise you all, are contemplating what that looks like to protect, in particular, students with disabilities through IDEA, students who are speakers of a language other than English as their first language, and the privacy protections afforded to students under FERPA and HIPAA where possible to make sure that city school police officers who are arresting or detaining students are ensuring that their federal civil rights are met.
Thank you. Thanks, Melissa. And last, but certainly not least, our friend Kim Truheart.
Good evening. Three minutes is not enough. And tonight, because we did not have 10 speakers, you really need to consider dividing the 30 minutes equally amongst those who signed.
For you?
Data, data, data. Rebecca and Edwin talked about some important demographic information that needs to be released and published on a regular that I don't believe is happening. I want data. They want data. We all want data, right? And I think we can engage in meaningful conversations when we have access to the important information about our students, our teachers, our staff. And I am a firm believer that House Bill 0462, which you oppose, would help get us more meaningful data. I'm hoping for a dashboard. I love the fact that Delegate Lukey, in his questioning about this bill at the hearing, asked, well, don't you have a dashboard at city schools that all this information is available to the public? The answer is no, we don't. But we're going to work on that. We're going to work on more transparency and accountability and promulgating and releasing of data, right, Allison? Okay. Let's talk about Florida. Guns is one option, and I think mental health, treatment, and services is another option. And because we touch these young people every day through what you do, you see the challenges these young people have. And if we're not providing adequate interventions, then we need to get better at it. And I challenge you to do that, rather than take the easy solution, which is putting more guns out on the streets in our communities and our schools. Our Investing in Parents Town Hall last week was a great success, and I really want to applaud Mr. Scroggins, who left the room, and Sabrina Sutton, and Dr. Sonia Santalise for your participation and support. Two important things that I heard. We had an incarcerated father talk about, as a parent, he was not being allowed to come to school to participate fully because of his past. I think we need to look at that. And as opposed to a blanket exclusion, let's look at parents in a more individualized way as to what their crimes were before we exclude them. We need parents actively involved in our children's development, learning, and their lives. And we can't afford to exclude any. The other important message I heard was around special education. And unfortunately, I was just too tired to write y'all this week about the agenda items, but there was one agenda item that stood out around who you collaborated with on the topic. And it is fleeting right now. But there were two outside groups that were consulted on this one agenda item. And it was PCAB and the Charter Advisory Board. And it failed to reach out to CCAC. And we heard clearly Thursday night that CCAC is feeling very neglected, very uninvolved, very unwelcome in the decision-making that goes on around here. And I'd like you to be real intentional about including those parents of children with special needs in a more deep and more meaningful way. I think it's critically important. And let's seriously look at incarcerated parents who are not allowed to really engage in their schools. I thank you. We've only just begun with this investing in parents stuff. Math is simple. 82,000 children. That means there's 164,000 adults out there that we can touch. And you know, if I brought 164,000 folks in here, y'all do anything I want. So I'm going to try that. I'm going to try to get 164,000 adults in this city to start showing up for our babies in the discussion.
Go for it. So thanks. And on two things, Kim, I wouldn't, when I first joined the Board on a regular basis, we heard from the leader of CCAC. And they're on the recognized groups that get preference for speaking. We haven't heard from them for a while, and I think it would really help to have that voice back in these Board meetings in the same way that we hear from BTU and PCAB. So.
I would just say also that Ms. Phillips is a very active, she's a very active partner.
So she's very active.
So she, I just had, I have a Transportation Work Group. She's part of that. She was just there today. Generally, she goes to almost all the PCAB meetings, and so generally, they're represented when we go to present policy at PCAB. They're almost always there.
Okay, so they're just not coming here.
I will talk to Sheila to see if there's better ways to engage them, but we speak with Sheila a lot, so.
No, Ms. Phillips is great. This is not looking at her.
Oh, no. And that's just my, that's just, I mean, so if they're participating in 10 other ways and just not coming here, that's fine. I just want to make sure they knew that they.
I just noted in the agenda tonight, there was something around students that did not say that you intentionally included consulting with them.
I noted that, too. I think that's the item that has been deferred, and it was only referred to two bodies. And I think in the, that would have been.
Right. I think that's the only one. It's not necessarily the special ed piece in particular, but there is, if that's the policy you're referring to, then yes. But I will also say this, that Ms. Biddle herself has had conversations with me about how to be, how to get more parents of students with disabilities engaged. And so I think it is an opportunity for all of us to help with that and not just see it as CCAC's challenge. But it really is all of our challenge, because she is here. She's in every PCAB meeting. She meets with Dr. Brooks now, right? Like, she does. But I think the larger challenge, which I also heard, and I think responded to about 75% of those questions, there really was, at least from my perspective, a real felt need for parents themselves, parents of children and students with IEPs to have more kind of hands-on development of their knowledge about how to advocate for their child and what's going on. And that, I definitely heard loud and clear. We even had a volunteer, who I think I passed on to Dr. Brooks, who, right there, because of the quality of the forum, was volunteering right then to actually help parents understand more of the process. So I, you know, no disagreement. But I just want to clarify that CCAC formally is involved in just about everything. I think what their challenge is, is all of our challenge is how to get the parents out.
And we got the motivation, the desire, and the intent to get parents more deeply involved. So parents, look out. I'm coming.
And I do just want to also say, for, I know it's your public testimony, but since your time's up, I'm going to grab it, is just to say, to commend you, to commend the Teachers Democracy Project. Did I botch your name?
No, that's good.
Well, no. Did I botch the organization's name? I know Rebecca, but, okay, good. I just want to commend you all for the turnout, for the level of engagement, for a real nice combination of providing parents with information as well as the opportunity to see. And when I got home that night, I was exhausted, but it was more because of the engagement, and it was a great exhaustion. So I just want to commend you all for just proactively organizing parents. And the energy in that room was palpable. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the School District for the organizing.
You know, I think all of us took a huge step Thursday night in this work. You know, I think all of us took a huge step Thursday night in this work. The level of, I guess, contact that I've gotten since Thursday night from the University of Maryland, from researchers at Johns Hopkins, from practitioners across the city who want to be part of this conversation is overwhelming, right? I got all kinds of people. Ms. Truheart, I want to help. I want to help. And it's like, yes, that's exactly what we need, because these parents need help. And how do we get it for them, right? How do we line them up with whatever tools or resources or knowledge that they don't have today? And I'm excited about tomorrow and the next day, and I hope you guys are as well.
We are, and we appreciate your leadership.
Yeah. Yeah, and the childcare was a big hit, you know?
Of course it was.
Not to mention the food. I forgot to thank Forest Park High School Culinary Program. It was perfect, yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
And Keith, while you stepped out of the room, Kim gave you a shout-out.
I did. I thank you so much, sir, for your help. Appreciate you.
Cool. Thank you very much. So with that, that includes public comment. I'd now like to entertain a motion for the items... All the items on the consent agenda except item 10.03. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda except 10.03? Commissioner Cannon, motion second. Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes nine to zero. And if we could now have members of the staff come up to discuss with us item 10.03, the Donna L. Banning Consultant Contract.
Good evening. Dr. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education. So currently, Donna Banning is working with the Office of Special Education. She is a consultant that had a contract with us that actually expired January 1st. She is collaborating between the Offices of Office of Special Education, the Schools Office, and the Office of Pupil Transportation as a liaison, as we are in a transportation cap with MSD and as a corrective action plan. She is facilitating work groups with ITD, working on implementing data review and monitoring systems as we're looking at ride times for students so that we're not having excessive ride times. We're making sure that we don't have our youngest students, as well as students that have been assigned to multiple placements. They're not on the bus for excessive amounts of times. We're also making sure that we are recording the amount of... When students arrive to school, that they're arriving to school on time, that they are not missing any type of instruction, so that we are providing a provision of free appropriate public education. So she's acting as a project manager for our corrective action plan. The corrective action plan, we entered into in December of 2017, and it goes through December of 2018.
So the corrective action plan is specifically to address the transportation issues with respect to our special ed students?
Yes.
And you're saying that this $60,000 contract is to continue her consulting work to help us address the transportation issues raised in the corrective action plan?
Yes. So it's... So her original contract was for $24,900, so this is an additional... So that's... Because it's extending, so it's not an additional $60,000. So it's just an additional $35,000.
Ah.
So it's not an additional...
Yeah, that wasn't clear at... Okay, so that was one of the confusions, because it says to amend an existing contract, and then it says the total cost of the contract is $60,000. The previous amount of the other contract isn't mentioned anywhere. Okay, so you're saying that what we're being asked to do is to have a contract amendment that adds $60,000 minus 24, so to add another $36,000?
Well, the original contract was $24,900, so we're just... We're adding an additional $35,000.
To bring it up to...
Bring it to the total of $60,000.
Yeah, okay. That wasn't... Maybe I'm the only one. That wasn't clear. Okay, that's why... That was one of my points of confusion. I think Commissioner Sondra, you had a different question, as it related to the Presentation and Ops Committee?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this intersects or if it somehow informs the overall transportation review policy, or not policy, presentation that we got.
So actually, what we are developing collectively amongst offices, the Office of Special Education, the Office of Pupil Transportation, and the Office of Schools, is we're developing procedures so that it is consistent across all offices and one message around transporting students, students with disabilities, whether they have an IEP, a 504, and even our homeless students, so that there's one consistent. So we're working on updating our procedures as well.
So will this look at all curb-to-curb or door-to-door, or will this only look at door-to-door for students with special needs?
All. Curb-to-curb and door-to-door.
So that then means all of our transportation, curb-to-curb, door-to-door?
Yes.
Which is why it was confusing that it didn't come to us in the transportation review update that we had in Ops last week.
So just as a... In the "For What It's Worth" department, I think that this is... This is something we need to do, if this person that you've deemed to be helpful in the previous work, that you... I can see why you'd want to continue this. I think that in the preparation of the write-up, it would be very helpful to have given a little bit more context of the previous contract, which you mentioned in the first sentence, and so that we really understood that what we were voting for was a $35,000 increase. I know the numbers might seem small, but we don't think any number is small.
I understand.
And while I wasn't in the Operations Committee meeting, having been in a number of them before, and really, if there's one thing that committee has really honed in on over the years, is the transportation updates, because it's such a vexing problem for the district, whether it's the shortage of drivers, the escalating cost, the unfortunate circumstances that lead us to need the door-to-door. So I think that as much as possible, the linking these two things together, because I think it's noteworthy, that this, relative to other contracts, this relatively minor contract, seems like it has the potential to leverage savings that we have previously been kind of struggling to figure out how to do. So I don't think there's enough in this write-up. We got it now that you presented it, but just for the future, this transportation issue is so huge, and I wouldn't... I would give us more, not less, in anything having to do with transportation write-ups. Fair enough? And the corrective action plan, because maybe I missed something, but I really didn't... I was... I missed that, and that's noteworthy in this as well. Commissioner Richardson?
And I just wanted to add, I'd like to be more clear about her deliverables. So at the bottom, you give us some bullet points, and it's like she's a liaison, then she's establishing sustainable support, strategic support, technical support. I don't know what that means. So just a little bit more on what is she going to deliver by December of this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Hassan, then Commissioner Bondima.
So to build off of what Commissioner Richardson was saying, especially in a fixed-price contract, because if it hasn't gone out to bid knowing exactly what's expected.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yeah, I just want to say that generally, when we read the proposals or what's going on in operations, it's not enough information, and when we hear the information, we're clear. And I think that every meeting, we always talk about, at least I'm always talking about, more and more information, because the terminology and the way it's written is not enough. So, for example, for this particular incident, it needs to be itemized, and once you itemize, it's clear. We won't have to come back and say, "What is this? What is that?" Because you know what it's...
Exactly.
What it's all about, but we don't. So when I read it, I was concerned as well.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a point of order. Maybe Dewana can help us, or Allison's not sitting here, but... It's... I'm looking for people who have more experience than any of us sitting around the table. I'm prepared to call for a motion on this because of the additional clarity we got from the discussion. But I'm also wondering if it's possible to get a follow-up memo to the board. It doesn't have to be an amendment, but I think it would be worth having on record. No, I would like to have on record the clarity around the exact amount that we voted on, and I think the particular follow-up for the board would be the deliverables, because when you enter into a fixed-price contract, you can end up paying for somebody's writer's cramp. I mean, I've gotten into that boat before, and you want to be careful, and you want to make sure, and you probably have this, but we really want to see it, too. I can't emphasize enough, even something that seems like a small-dollar contract is not a small-dollar contract for a district that is trying to watch every nickel.
Exactly.
Is that possible, Allison?
Yeah, that's possible. Yeah, we could write... Sorry. I was going to say, we could write... I forget what we call it, but it's not a memo, but it's an external document, and it's basically like a white paper that just summarizes like what we just said, so that that can be part of the public record, so that we can...
That's what we want, because we don't want this just to happen in a nice little chat at the board meeting. These are serious questions, and it's helpful that it came up on a relatively modest contract, because if this was a larger contract, we may actually defer it, but we won't. And Dewana, you were going to add?
Well, I was going to say, the motion to move this procurement item based upon receiving that information...
Joe just sent it to me. It's called a summary report. That's the format we use to make kind of like just written documentations public.
Okay. So I think that's the motion we'd like... I'd like to... Sean, you want to add something? I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if it's... The motion is based... Moving forward is based on this white paper, when do we need to have that into you?
I'm concerned about... I'm concerned about... Okay, Commissioner Chinia?
That's my concern, is that this is a part... This is a requirement from a corrective action plan. So my concern is that we're not going to hold up the work that needs to be done. This is with MSD. This is not internal.
So thanks, Dewana, for that idea. I think we will know that that's an option for the future. I think the motion I'd like to entertain now, if possible, is a motion to approve the procurement item as presented, and note that we've requested the follow-up white... Summary.
Summary report, that we will then make part of the public record so that it's there with the procurement item, so you can see that we sent that.
Terrific. So, motion to approve the agenda item, 10.03. Commissioner Cannon, second. Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, and Richardson. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have two discussion items this evening to close out our agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Cannon.
All right. I think the first one is the grant and fiscal reporting policy. First reader? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Cox. I'm the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here to present for a board consideration the policy on grant fiscal reporting. So let me figure out how to... Nope.
Ms. Cox?
Does anybody?
Well, you're getting that ready. Is that a new title for you that we need to congratulate you on?
Oh, a year ago.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay, what do I do? This one? Okay, thank you. Thank you. There it goes.
All right.
The purpose of this grant fiscal reporting policy is to provide guidelines for the fiscal reporting requirements pertaining to grants received by city schools. Grant funding, as we know, provides supplemental resources for the programs of city schools, which should be aligned to the board's mission and goals. Oops. Oh, no, no.
Good.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. This policy replaces Board Rule 909.1, which related to the acceptance of outside grants, and 909.2, which was the procedures for the acceptance of grants. Okay, this is the fiscal policy only, okay? What we will also do is reinstate the semi-annual grant reports to the board, which we had done, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago or so, and so we will reinstate that with the approval of this policy. It'll be a real helpful report. It'll give you the current grants and the carryover grants and the dollar amount, so you understand where we are at a given point in time. We did reach out for community stakeholder engagement with P-CAB and the Charter Advisory Board, and with the note that we just heard on the last one, I'll be happy to reach out to C-CAC as well. In terms of implementation, there's not going to be any major changes other than providing the semi-annual grant reports, you know, for the periods ending December and June as we close our years. In terms of policy standards, the scopes... The elements that fall within the scope of this policy include the board authority, grant-related, federal, state, and local laws, board priorities, and reporting requirements. Now, just so you know, the... In terms of reporting within our financial statements, the grants fall within the special revenue fund, and we have federal, state, and other grants. And the bulk of it is federal grants. A lot of them pass through MSD, but we also get state and other grants as well. Responsibility and board authorization, the board will develop and approve system priorities, which then should be incorporated within the scope of the grants. The grant application process, this has changed in the last few years. City schools' grant applications will follow the processes established by the city schools' Data Monitoring and Compliance Department. That's within the Office of OAA. Grant applications go to OAA for the initial review of the grant narrative, the proposed grant budget and spending plan, to ensure compliance with grant requirements and system priorities. Then the Director of Data Monitoring and Compliance puts the proposal into circulation to secure the various approvals that are required before we may submit to the grantor. Just so you know, there may be a companion policy later on on securing grants, grants reporting, you know, what assistance we can offer to people who are trying to secure grants. Grant acceptance. The chief executive officer shall accept grants on behalf of the board. For some of our grants, particularly our pass-through, MSD sometimes requires that the CEO sign grant assurances, you know, confirming that city schools is in compliance and will make sure that we are in compliance with federal, state, and local laws. Grant expenditures. Grant funds must be expended in accordance with existing board policies and in compliance with state and federal requirements. Timeliness of the reporting process. We just want to emphasize, the grant manager is responsible for compliance with programmatic reporting requirements. The chief financial officer is responsible for satisfying the fiscal reporting requirements. Now, sometimes, the chief financial officer shall provide the fiscal report to the grant manager for inclusion in their submission, and sometimes we make the submission directly, such as what we do with the annual financial report. We enter the data directly into the MSD website. Of course, these reporting processes and submissions shall be in compliance with state and local laws, COMAR, federal, and any other reporting requirements. Audit. All grant activity is subject to audit. Now, the grant activity can be audited within the confines of our regular audits, or they may have their own specific audits. For instance, the largest audit we do of the year is the audit of basic financial statements, the one that's due to MSD by September 30th each year. The grants are audited within the confines of that audit. And in addition, there's another one called the single audit, which is due December 31st each year, which is federal grants only, but that's the largest part of our grants. There's others that are more specific, like the subrecipient grant monitoring visit relates directly to IDEA. There's a lot of specific audits that happen according with the requirements of the grantors. Just so you have some idea of the scope, in FY '16, grants were 103 million of our financial statements, and in FY '17... statements, and in FY17, it was 107 million. So we're talking about a lot of money. So this is just to make sure that we are doing everything that we're supposed to do, that we report as we should. Okay. So are there any comments or questions?
Commissioner Richardson? And Commissioner Cannon?
Just because I'm unclear with this process, are these grants coming into the school district?
Yes.
As a whole?
Yes.
Is there a way, or do we work with schools that get grants individually, like big federal grants individually, to ensure that they are also in compliance?
Yes, yes, they, yes to everything. You just said, yes. Commissioner Cannon?
Now, I know this is grant fiscal reporting, and we're gonna get semi-annual reports, which is great. We've also talked about kind of a, maybe it's for CEO, under CEO discretion, to actually acknowledge, like, this would, this would include private donations as well, right?
This is not donations, this is grant. We do have other grants.
Right.
So that would be included in this. Now, in terms of donations, donations have a.
Right, another category.
Yes.
We recognize donations, but we don't have a practice to recognize grants, and we have significant amount of national and local foundations that are contributing to the school system in certain ways. And so I don't want to, I don't want every grant, I don't want to have to have a recognition, but I would like it, just maybe the CEO to consider how to acknowledge the grants, does, maybe doesn't have to go in the policy, but just think about a procedure to recognize.
Certainly.
Yeah, it's a good idea, Commissioner Cannon, I think we should do it.
Yes, we are appreciative of any grant money that we get, so.
That's right.
That would be wonderful.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, I have a question. When I look at your procedures, your policy, this is normal procedure. Is something up here that's different, that you're doing differently than you've been doing?
No, we are converting from the board rules to the policy.
To the policy, okay.
So that's, that's a large part of this, and also we're just, you know, reinstating the semi-annual grant reporting. But other than that, we're, we'll be doing everything just as we had, you know.
That's what I, okay.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hassan?
So thank you, Mary Ann, and this has come through the Policy Committee, and we're all in favor and support. I would use this opportunity, though, to illustrate for the public the complexity of grant monitoring, and encourage the district to consider a development office or a person, because the consequences to not being in compliance with federal grants are significant. So just, just as, as a backburner thing to consider and to keep in mind. And that would be also to Commissioner Cannon's place, or point, a place where grants and donations could, could all be recognized and monitored.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oops, I'm sorry, my microphone's up. Final presentation, policy, GBCA compensation.
My name is Jerome Jones. I'm the Director for Labor Relations and Negotiations for City Schools, and will be presenting the compensation policy. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the board meets its responsibilities to compensate employees in accordance with the negotiated agreements between the board and unions, while complying with all applicable laws and statutes. And by all of the items that came before the board, with extending all of the contracts, we are currently doing that with all of the unions right now, negotiating all of the This policy converts the current board rule to a board compensation policy and accompanying regulation. The policy proposes that it requires the CEO and/or designated to present to the board a salary recommendation for unaffiliated employees every year. Currently, under the current board rule, there's no requirement to look at compensation rates for unaffiliated employees. Currently, all of the unions are covered in the negotiated agreements, but this at least requires that we look at the compensation rates for unaffiliated employees each year. It also proposes the human capital developer process to recommend compensation levels for unaffiliated employees. Again, it requires the CEO to present to the board a recommendation to unaffiliated employees. It also defines that the board approves compensation schedules for affiliated employees through the approval of the negotiated labor agreements, and it enforces that the board can change employee compensation rates because of disciplinary action, change of assignment, or for budgetary reasons. The regulations which accompany this policy will require that human capital will define all employee compensation rates in accordance with the negotiated agreements and/or board-approved scales. Human capital also will have to develop processes for employee requests for salary reviews at any time, if an employee wants to look at their salary to determine, have, have questions regarding whether it's appropriate or not. We have a process for that. We also define a placement on the appropriate salary scale at the time of hire, based on the negotiated agreements. We have, will have a compensation guidance for unaffiliated employees with a compensation package, and develop and maintain job classifications and job descriptions for all positions within city schools. And finally, the human capital will complete a market study for unaffiliated positions to inform salary recommendations for 2018, 2019. This salary study that we are, would be looking at doing, we would ask for, that an outside firm do that, because we don't have the wherewithal within human capital to complete such a study.
I just have one question, I want to make sure, and this is for Allison. Is that the same market study we've been talking about?
Yes.
I thought so, I just want to make sure we weren't doing two salaries. Just checking. Any other questions on this? No, this is terrific, actually. It's important. Because if this, if this kind of stuff goes for too long without checking in on it, you lose people, you can't keep up, so it's great. Thanks. So with that, I'd like to highlight the upcoming meetings. The next executive session is on Tuesday, March 13th, at 3 o'clock upstairs. The next public board meeting is on Tuesday, March 13th, at 5 o'clock here in this room. The next PCAB meeting is on Thursday, March 15th, at 6:30 in this room. And then on March 20th, at 10 a.m., the Operations Committee, Operations Committee will meet in this room. The Policy Committee will also meet on March 20th at 3:30. And as Commissioner Chinia noted earlier, the next Teaching and Learning Committee is on March, no, my bad, May 1st, new time, 3:30 in this room, and there will be public comments. So we are hopeful that more members of the general public and interested teachers and students will also now be available to attend that meeting in, in ways that they couldn't when the meeting was earlier in the day. Anything else for the good of the whole? With that, Commissioner McFadden?
I don't know if you celebrated Commissioner Frank's birthday, if we said happy birthday to Commissioner Frank. Yep, okay.
Let him eat, let him eat cake.
I finished my dinner and ate my cake.
So with that.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. With that, motion to adjourn. Commissioner Hassan, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. The ayes have it, we are officially adjourned.
You gonna bring it home? You gonna bring the rest of it home? I tell you what, those little quiches were.